She wouldn't come tonight to recognize us there.
No.
Crazy girl.
The look on his face.
Exactly. You know, like one of those planes to be at the beach with the bears behind it.
Circling.
Exactly. That's what I want. We salute Gail. So I won.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the May 16th, 2017 Pecosin City School Board Meeting to order. Mr. McDevitt.
Curtis Brown, Jr. is our pledge leader for the evening. Curtis is a sophomore at Pecosin High School who is involved with Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Save the Bees Club, Young Life, and Math Honor Society. He plays JV football and varsity spring track. Curtis is a military child who volunteers at Mount Zion Baptist Church and Family of God Baptist Church. He is pursuing NASA internships for the summer and fall. He plans to major in aerospace engineering at either Brown University, University of Florida, or Mississippi State University.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Curtis. Our inspirational reader tonight is Kayla Muzza. Kayla is a junior at Pecosin High School who is a member of Teens for Troops, German Honor Society, AV Honor Roll, and president of the PHS Japanese Culture Club. She has been accepted into the Governor's Academy for Foreign Languages in German and aspires to be a clinical psychologist for the US Navy.
Um, I have, I do not have a title for this poem, but it is by a poet named Aaron Hanson. "If there's one thing that I may tell you, let it be you are your home. Your body is the only house that you will ever truly own. Maybe it's got some broken windows and there's tear stains on the floors. Maybe you lock the things you wish you weren't behind its many doors. But there is wisdom on its bookshelves and a laugh to light the rooms. There's a vase upon the table where the love you've grown all blooms. Dreams sit on the mantelpiece next to kindness and your trust, where you use them all so often they have no time to collect dust. So please look at the mansion, don't look at the mansions with that envy in your eyes. There's more that makes a home than its appearance and its size. Your body is your shelter, so you deserve to love it all. Don't let the world stand round outside and tell you how to paint your walls. How lucky that you have somewhere to protect you from the night. And if there's cracks left from the past, well, then they just let in more light."
Thank you, Curtis and Kayla. Ms. Helsel, would you introduce the student presentation tonight, please?
Sure. Good evening. Tonight's student presentation is by a Pecosin High School student council members. This year, the SCA wanted to revamp the event previously known as Sadie's. The SCA wanted more student involvement and decided to incorporate games, food, and a petting zoo in addition to the Sadie Hawkins Dance. We have SCA members with us this evening to present their success, which include the SCA President Hannah Yee, Brody McDevitt, and Julie Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Hannah Yee. I'm a senior at Pecosin High School, and I am SCA President. Today, I'm here to talk about the many successes we had with Spring Fest this year, along with Brody McDevitt and Julie Ellis. So what is Spring Fest? Spring Fest was formerly known as Sadie Hawkins. We decided to, you know, change the name and revamp the whole dance because throughout the years, the student involvement with Sadie Hawkins has significantly decreased. Last year, around 50 tickets were sold and 20 to 30 students actually attended the dance. As a group, we came up with an idea to add more things than just a DJ. We added games, we added a petting zoo, and we had really good food. We had around, I think, 2,500 chicken nuggets. And if that doesn't get students to get involved, I don't know what will. Our goal was to promote student, uh, school unity. With all these different aspects to the dance, we are able to include many different students that might not have been comfortable with just dancing all night long. They could have been playing games or, you know, petting the really cute animals there. So that was really cool. Another really cool thing that we implemented this year was the use of social media. As soon as Dr. Syak came to our school, she allowed us to make our own Twitter page. If you see a student anytime, they're always on their phone, you know, checking their social media, their Snapchat, their Twitter. So a really cool thing was we were able to tweet out messages we had. So for example, make sure to buy your Spring Fest tickets, or tomorrow is our TV show, Day for Spirit Week, so make sure to dress up for that. So the use of Twitter was really important in advertising and getting our message out. Another really cool thing that we did was we were able to get our own Snapchat geo-filter. And for you all who don't know what a Snapchat geo-filter is, on the app Snapchat, when you take a picture, you can scroll through and add different filters. We were able to create, customize our own filter, so students at the dance were able to use their own Snapchat filters and have a good time. We also collaborated with Mrs. Bowden's marketing class and had a little competition between different groups within the class. They all created their own promotional videos. Some of them were funny, really funny, some of them really informative, but overall, it really created more students get involved, you know, promoting our dance and having a good time.
So in addition to the dance, we also had our first ever spring pep rally. So this was really fun because we've never had a pep rally in the spring before. And this pep rally, rather than being centered around sports, like the fall, the homecoming pep rally, we centered it kind of around the arts. So we had a performance from our show choir evolution. They did a great job despite the fact that they performed in the gym, which is a little bit of a weird place to perform. And we recognized the district and state performers. Although it wasn't centered around sports, it was centered around the arts, we still acknowledged our winner sports, those outstanding athletes that made all conference and all region and all, all-state and things like that. And we also did a good luck send-off to our spring sports. After that, we had our, our game, our little interclass competition with the teachers as well. We played Hungry Hungry Hippos, Human Hungry Hungry Hippos. So you had to try to gather as many balls as you could, and everybody had a lot of fun with it. We also had a teaser for our spring musical, Snow White and the Prince. And so we had Drew Barden, former student representative to the school board, and he was our, he played Rupert, the butler, in the musical, and he was our narrator, and he kind of introduced us to some of the characters and kind of introduced us to the story. And the cast sang some songs from the musical and just kind of got people familiar with it. So they, they'd be excited to come watch it when it premiered on May 4th. And actually, all in all, it was very successful. Big showing. People came back to see it multiple times. I think everyone really liked it. And in addition to all the games and things, we had a fundraiser for charity. And students could pay, students and teachers could pay $1 for a raffle ticket to put in a bucket that was under another teacher's name. And the top three teachers with the most raffle tickets, they draw a name out, and that person would be allowed to pie the teacher. And the teacher with the most raffle tickets would choose what charity the money would go to. So that was Dr. Syak. She got the most raffle tickets. And then we have Mr. Spruill and Mr. Diggs. And to get in the spirit for Spring Fest, all week long, we had lunch games. So this is just during your lunch period. There'd be a game going on, and everyone could watch and participate. So for example, Monday, we played Entourage, which is basically team rock, paper, scissors, and you get a bunch of people to play. And everyone goes one-on-one, and the winner gains the loser as a follower, and they all cheer for each other and support each other. And eventually, you just have two giant groups going at it in rock, paper, scissors, and it was a lot of fun.
Another thing that we did this year was to kick off our Spirit Week for Sadie's, we actually, that's when we held the raffle for the pieing of the teachers, shall we say. We actually had a lot of involvement with this, and I believe Dr. Syak chose to donate the money to PAWS, a local organization, actually, I believe. And we even had some underground activity from the teachers. That's how we had a sudden influx of tickets at the end and got Dr. Syak pie. So overall, that was very successful and got people very excited for Spirit Week, which we held ticket sales during lunches the following week. And as Hannah said previously, our Sadie Hawkins dances in the past few years have been very unsuccessful and not many students attended. But this year, over 50% of the students bought tickets. I believe over 300 were sold, and 100% of people that bought tickets actually came to the dance. So that was a huge improvement from last year to the... We also had our first Spirit Week in the spring, following the week of our pep rally. Our first day was Music Monday, where you got to pick your favorite musical artist or genre and dress up to represent them. We actually have Brody on the board there with our English class.
And Julie.
Our second day was TV Tuesday, and this day, you were supposed to pick a character and dress up like them. Hannah chose to dress up like a fairy from Fairly Odd Parents, a few of my friends, and I believe one of the teachers actually dressed up with us as characters from The Office. And it was really exciting, and there were a lot of great costumes. Our third day was Dynamic Duo Day, and this day, you were supposed to pick a friend and dress up like Salt and Pepper, or, in Hannah's case, breakfast foods. And that was exciting, seeing all the creative costumes that people came up with. Our fourth day on Thursday is Class Color Day, and each class wears their respective color just to, you know, represent, I guess, as they would say. Our last day, and I think the most successful day, is called Together We Stand or Freedom Friday. And basically, you just deck yourselves out in red, white, and blue, and say, "God bless America" every other sentence. And we actually had students gather in the parking lot before school one day, and they played the National Anthem, and it was really exciting. And we had all the students and some of the teachers involved, and it was really great. So our actual dance was actually so much different than Sadie Hawkins. We had so much more than dancing. As previously said, we had cornhole outside and Giant Jenga and Connect Four. So if you really weren't into maybe dancing all night, or the kind of music that they were playing, you could go outside or play ping pong with your friends. And it got a lot of different students involved. We also got a petting zoo approved this year, so that was exciting. We had baby pigs and llamas and horses and Dr. Syak's favorite, baby goats, that were there. A lot of students got very excited about this, so that was awesome that we got to implement that at the dance this year. We also had a photo booth at the dance that, one of our teachers, actually, Mr. Morgan, took the pictures, and he's very good, and he put them on his website. And a lot of the students and even the teachers got pictures taken, and it was really fun to post those on social media and show everybody how much fun you were having at the dance. All right. Hannah finishing? So overall, Spring Fest was a huge success. As a group, we are very happy that we are hopefully be able to start a brand-new tradition here at Pecosin High School. And not only was it exciting, having, you know, a bunch of cool things started, like the pep rally and the petting zoo, it was really cool seeing the whole school come together and really show our Pecosin pride, you know, all together. So, yeah. Thank you.
Great job. If you'd have done that when I was in high school, I'd have gone to the dance. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda tonight?
We do not.
Okay, let's move on to recognitions.
We could just ask our student presenters if you would stay, because after our recognitions, we'll have the intermission, and the board will want to come down and congratulate you.
Thank you. Our first recognition tonight is going to the Pecosin Education Foundation, and we're recognizing the foundation for the work done by the members of the board on behalf of all of our students. I'd like to ask the following members of the foundation's Board of Directors to please come forward. Judy McCormick, who is president of the board; Ginny Napier, vice president of the board; Mary Earl Stallings, secretary of the board; Ilwudzakowski, treasurer of the board; and board members who we have in the audience this evening, Sherry Harper; Jeremy Jordan; Pat Kimsey; Debbie Pummel; Linda Riggs; and Allison Sutton. Also note that in the audience this evening, I'd like to recognize Mr. Charlie French, who is no longer part of the foundation board, but was for many years and actually was one of the founding board members of PEF. And also, we have acting as photographer for PEF, and also somebody who's very supportive of the Casino Night fundraiser, Mr. Ed Harper. The Pecosin Education Foundation has raised over half a million dollars since the start of the 2009-2010 school year through the hard work of the Board of Directors. A majority of the funds are raised through the Run for the Bulls race at the end of October and the Casino Night event in March. All of the funds they raise go back into our classrooms through teacher grants or to students in the form of college scholarships and grants to offset costs of attendance at national competitions. Additionally, PEF recognizes our Teachers of the Year by purchasing bricks for the walkway in front of the high school in their names. They also recognize our retirees with flowers and gift certificates to surf rider. Finally, they support the Real Men Read program that takes place in our elementary and primary schools each February. Most recently, the PEF Board voted to donate $44,000 to the school division to be used to purchase technology items such as Chromebooks, laptops, tables for computers, projectors, and software. This is money that was especially helpful this year because funding was tight as a result of the cut the state made to the funds for the teacher raises. We had to make reductions elsewhere in the budget so we could fully fund those raises this year. I cannot begin to express my appreciation for the members of the Board of Directors of PEF and all the community members and businesses who support them financially and with assistance at the fundraising events. Our PEF Board of Directors has truly made a positive difference for our students and teachers over the years. Please join me in thanking them as we provide them with thank you notes from all of our schools. Yeah, that would be great. I also believe they have a large check to hand to you, Mr. Cast. And I just want to tell you, I actually contacted them to get the amount that they have collected over the, the years since they've become so active. And I'm not sure who was more surprised that it was over half a million dollars, me or them. But if you think about our small school division in our community, to have collected over half a million dollars that goes back into our schools is just incredible. So, thank you. I can't thank you all enough. Next, we'd ask that Toni Bradshaw come forward, please. Toni was our Volunteer of the Month for April, but was unable to attend our meeting, so we're recognizing her this evening. She is a volunteer at Pecosin Primary School. She worked as Pecosin Primary School paraprofessional for 13 years, but left last summer to spend more time with her family. Toni enjoys working with students so much that she just couldn't stay away. Toni volunteers in Mrs. Bray's kindergarten classroom two to three days per week, averaging three hours at a time. Since January, she has worked with students 78 hours. I joked with her that she's really now just working for free. When asked, Mrs. Bray had this to say about Toni. "It is no surprise that Mrs. Bradshaw has created a great sense of excitement about sight words in her kindergarten classroom over the last few months. My students have become so motivated to work on their words and move to the next set, so they can tell Mrs. Bradshaw when she comes in to volunteer. Two to three days a week, she arrives before school starts to make sure her games are all set up, checks in with me to see who she'll be working with, and goes to pull out the words that are specific to the group needs, so that the students will get the best instruction. And then comes back in during our morning, find motor centers to greet students, help with anything that might arise during arrival time, and visit with the students. She even has taken the time to furnish a treasure bowl full of highlighters, stickers, pencils, Play-Doh, and other goodies that students can earn prizes from when they pass each set of the sight words. She always brings a big smile, and her excitement and happiness is contagious. She truly is a ray of sunshine in our classroom, and we are so grateful that she takes the time out of her days to come work with us. Toni Bradshaw is missed by the faculty, staff, and students of Pecosin Primary School. When in the building to volunteer, students and staff light up with delight when they see her. Her former students sometimes get so excited when they see her, they forget to stay in line or in their seats. Toni truly deserves the Volunteer of the Month award for her continuing dedication to the students of Pecosin Primary School. Pecosin Primary School looks forward to her continued service. Please join me in congratulating Toni Bradshaw on being selected the Volunteer of the Month in April." Next, we'd like to recognize our volunteer, and it's actually Volunteers of the Month for the month of May from the high school. So if Dot Flanagan and Astro would come forward, please. I have to say, as a superintendent, this is a first. But as a dog lover, it's wonderful. Dot and Astro have been coming to PHS since the fall of 2014. She and Astro donate an hour of their time each week to read with students. The purpose of the program is twofold. First, it provides an opportunity for the students to practice reading fluently in a nonjudgmental environment. Astro never corrects them. Secondly, it helps students to become more comfortable with dogs and how to interact with them. Several students have a great fear of dogs, and being around Astro has helped them overcome that fear. Now, a little bit about Astro. His breed is a Bouvier de Flanders. His origin is that of a cattle herder and general farmer's helper, including cart-pulling. He's an ideal farm dog. Modern times find him as a watch and guard dog, as well as a family friend, guardian, and protector. His physical and mental characteristics and deportment, coupled with his intelligence and initiative, enable him to also perform as a tracking dog and a guide dog for the blind. Oh, her, sorry. Sorry, Astro. In 2013, in 2013, Dot and Astro were awarded the President's Volunteer Service Award, presented by the Corporation for National and Community Service. Please join me in thanking Dot and Astro for their service to Pecosin High School students. We were going to recognize the Senior of the Month for April, Brett Hodges, but I think he was unable to attend this evening. Correct? Okay. So next, we'd ask that our presenter, Hannah Yee, come forward. A lot of stress, Hannah, to come up after Astro. Hannah Yee is the PHS May Student of the Month. She's a spirited young woman who works hard and always tries to keep a positive attitude. She is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Spanish, Science, and Math Honor Societies. She has held a number of leadership positions during her time at Pecosin High School and currently serves as the SCA President. She has been an asset to our varsity tennis team since the eighth grade, and this year, she was dance captain for show choir evolution. Outside of school, Hannah has volunteered her time and talents at Pecosin Elementary School, both as a mentor to the students and as a counselor for camp intervention. After graduation, Hannah will head to Blacksburg, where she will pursue a bachelor's degree from Virginia Tech. Please join me in congratulating Hannah Yee on being selected as Senior of the Month. Next, we'd like to recognize, congratulate our yearbook staff for an accomplishment, so I'd ask at this time if Belle Kujowski, Elise Gilmore, Brian Vermillion, and our yearbook sponsor Paula Bennett would come forward. Congratulations go to the PHS yearbook staff for being selected the regional winner and the national second-place winner for their 2017 yearbook cover. It was designed by yearbook graphic artist senior Belle Kujowski and the yearbook staff members. The cover was designed in Photoshop, making use of opacity layers. The cover speaks to the book's theme of "together." In the words of the yearbook staff, "together" evokes a different meaning for every individual. The idea of togetherness as humans is one of the most important lessons that we can learn, both in and out of school. Our small-town community is an important part of our high school life. Our cover reflects all the components it takes for our school to succeed. The community is represented in the background image with the overlap of the team image to represent our school. When both work to get, when both work together, we accomplish our goals and succeed. The outstanding graphic design work, the use of geometry, color, and transparency, the incorporation of bold and beautiful photographs, and how the whole design speaks to the book's themes, were all characteristics of why the cover was chosen. Please join me in congratulating the yearbook staff for their national second-place finish. A little bittersweet right now. We need to bring Brody McDevitt to the podium. Brody McDevitt is a junior at Pecosin High School and has been serving as our student representative to the school board for this school year. He's done an excellent job in updating us with regard to the student activities at each school. He also has not hesitated to ask questions when he's had them at meetings. In addition to his work as a school board student representative, he is a varsity football, basketball, and track and field athlete. Brody is a member of National Honor Society, Student to Student, Math Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Society. He's part of student council and is class president for the class of 2018. Brody is a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes Drama Club and was the magic mirror in the spring musical, Snow White and the Prince. And may I add, he did an excellent job. After graduating from Pecosin High School, he plans on attending Notre Dame or the University of Virginia to major in engineering or finance. Please join me in thanking Brody for his work as our school board representative for this school year.
Now, was it that fun? And we're going to take a break and visit just a few minutes with you guys. Thanks. I don't know why I hit that. We're taking a break. I said so. Congratulations go to the PHS yearbook staff for being selected the regional winner and the national second-place winner for their 2017 yearbook cover. It was designed by yearbook graphic artist senior Belle Kujowski and the yearbook staff members. The cover was designed in Photoshop, making use of opacity layers. The cover speaks to the book's theme of "together," and the words of the yearbook staff, "together," evokes a different meaning for every individual. The idea of togetherness as humans is one of the most important lessons that we can learn, both in and out of school. Our small-town community is an important part of our high school life. Our cover reflects all the components it takes for our school to succeed. The community is represented in the background image with the overlap of the team image to represent our school. When both work together, we accomplish our goals and succeed. The outstanding graphic design work, the use of geometry, color, and transparency, the incorporation of bold and beautiful photographs, and how the whole design speaks to the book's themes were all characteristics of why the cover was chosen. Please join me in congratulating the yearbook staff for their national second-place finish.
A little bittersweet right now. We need to bring Brody McDevitt to the podium. Brody McDevitt is a junior at Procosson High School and has been serving as our student representative to the school board for this school year. He's done an excellent job in updating us with regard to the student activities at each school. He also has not hesitated to ask questions when he's had them at meetings. In addition to his work as the school board's student representative, he is a varsity football, basketball, and track and field athlete. Brody is a member of National Honor Society, Student to Student, Math Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Society. He's part of student council and is class president for the class of 2018. Brody is a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes Drama Club and was the magic mirror in the Spring Musical, Snow White, and The Prince. And may I add, he did an excellent job. After graduating from Procosson High School, he plans on attending Notre Dame or the University of Virginia to major in engineering or finance. Please join me in thanking Brody for his work as our school board representative for this school year.
Now, was it that fun? And we're going to take a break and visit just a few minutes with you guys. Thanks. I don't know why I hit that. Emphasis. We're taking a break.
I said so.
Okay, moving on to other matters. Consideration approval of two honorariums to be provided annually for Procosson City Public School students attending career or technical education courses at New Horizons Regional Education Center. Dr. Parrish?
Yes. In past years, the school board has elected to donate funding for an honorarium of $500 for students who are graduating and they have been successful in their programs at New Horizons in the CTE courses. So these may be students who are not going on to school but will use it as tools for a job that they're going to acquire after they graduate from us, or it could be that they are attending some kind of technical education and would use it for the funding. Last year, the school board approved to actually provide two of those $500 honorariums. Know that that is the only type of honorarium that we have for those that the school board has been providing. So what we're doing this year is bringing this to you so you can approve now for it to be done annually so that you don't each year have to approve. You do have over $11,000 in the school board account balance, and remember, this is the account that you donate, that school board members have in the past, and current school board members may donate to. So this is not school board funding in terms of what we receive from the state or from the city. This is actual donated dollars from school board members. So bringing to you tonight is just asking you to approve the two honorariums that would go to New Horizons students when they do their graduation ceremony from New Horizons. Know that the staff at New Horizons actually picks the recipients for these, and they are obviously Procosson students. So those teachers are ones that work closely with them in that area. So I'm bringing forward that recommendation for approval of the two honorariums totaling $1,000.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Same, moved.
Do we have a second?
Same.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I think it's great that we do this. I think it's important that our students be recognized and given an additional opportunity by the tools of their trade, so to speak.
I agree, and I'd also like to commend the school board for giving back in this way. So, great job, everybody. Ramers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheila?
Aye.
Chairman Kex?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, moving on to other matters. Consideration approval of two honorariums to be provided annually for Procosson City Public School students attending career or technical education courses at New Horizons Regional Education Center. Dr. Parrish?
Yes. In past years, the school board has elected to donate funding for an honorarium of $500 for students who are graduating and they have been successful in their programs at New Horizons in the CTE courses. So these may be students who are not going on to school but will use it as tools for a job that they're going to acquire after they graduate from us, or it could be that they are attending some kind of technical education and would use it for the funding. Last year, the school board approved to actually provide two of those $500 honorariums. Know that that is the only type of honorarium that we have for those that the school board has been providing. So what we're doing this year is bringing this to you so you can approve now for it to be done annually so that you don't each year have to approve. You do have over $11,000 in the school board account balance, and remember, this is the account that you donate, that school board members have in the past, and current school board members may donate to. So this is not school board funding in terms of what we receive from the state or from the city. This is actual donated dollars from school board members. So bringing to you tonight is just asking you to approve the two honorariums that would go to New Horizons students when they do their graduation ceremony from New Horizons. Know that the staff at New Horizons actually picks the recipients for these, and they are obviously Procosson students. So those teachers are ones that work closely with them in that area. So I'm bringing forward that recommendation for approval of the two honorariums totaling $1,000.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Same, moved.
Do we have a second?
Same.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I think it's great that we do this. I think it's important that our students be recognized and given an additional opportunity by the tools of their trade, so to speak.
I agree, and I'd also like to commend the school board for giving back in this way. So, great job, everybody. Ramers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheila?
Aye.
Chairman Kex?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much. Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick off communication?
Yes, and those of you here or at home may have noticed that we are missing one of our school board members. Mrs. Ann Rollins did recently resign from the school board, so she's not here this evening with us. She served on the board for almost five years, so we truly appreciate the time that she dedicated to the school division through her attendance at meetings and other school division events, and her willingness to share her perspective with us while she was on the board. She didn't come tonight, but hopefully she's watching us on TV, and I just want to, on behalf of the school board, thank her for the work that she did on the school board over the past five years. Also, as Dr. Fox mentioned, we are marching down towards the end of the year, so our next board meeting will actually be after graduation, believe it or not. So I just want to remind students to stay focused in your classrooms for the remainder of the year, and I continue to look forward to seeing parents and other family members and community members. So those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Mr. McDevitt?
So I have our reports from our schools. The primary school, May has been a busy month for students and staff at Procosson Primary. Procosson Primary PTO hosted the Fourth Annual Spring Carnival last week. Parent and teacher volunteers organized games, inflatables, cotton candy, pizza, and more. Despite the rain, the carnival was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening. Procosson Primary teacher hosted Family STEM Night last month, too. During this hugely popular evening, family enjoyed hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math workshops. Students built robotic fingers, gliders, roller coasters, gravity mazes, and constructed bird feeders and birdhouses and coded robots. Procosson Elementary, Procosson Middle, and Procosson High students were in attendance presenting their various STEM-related clubs or activities to the families. Community members participated in a STEM career fair showcasing their STEM-related jobs. The night was well-attended with over 400 smiling children enjoying the evening.
The night was well attended with almost 140 students participating. The kindergarten team hosted their first-ever kindergarten sneak peek night for rising kindergarten parents. Parents attended informational presentations by the kindergarten team on preparing their child academically and socially for kindergarten. The information was well received by parents, and all went home with goodie bags full of items to help prepare their child. Pecosin Elementary School Ecology Club went kayaking on May 8th. The students and staff had a great time, and considering no one fell in the water, it was a very successful trip. This past Saturday, three teams from PES competed in the Great Computer Challenge competition. All three teams placed, getting a first in desktop publishing, a second place in desktop presentation, and a third place in video editing. Congratulations to all involved with GCC. The fourth graders are planning to take a walking field trip to the Pecosin Learning Garden, which is located behind the Pecosin Museum. Students will get to talk to a beekeeper, participate in a scavenger hunt identifying different trees, take a tour of the garden, and plant a seed in a cup to take home with them. After that, they will take a walk around the nature trail and then head back to school. The Pecosin Learning Garden is a favorite place for teachers and students alike at PES. If you have a fifth grader, please check the school website for the fifth grade celebration ceremony, schedule, date, and times. The middle school. Pecosin Middle School is in full swing during the last month of the school year. Our sixth and seventh graders have analyzed poems to search for the six types of figurative language and have presented poems using a microphone. Seventh and eighth graders have been busy researching cyberbullying, online safety, and the digital literacy database. Some of our students participated in an engineering extravaganza made possible by the loan of an engineering box with vacuum cleaner parts and screwdrivers from the Dyson Vacuum Cleaner Corporation. Students worked to disassemble vacuum cleaner parts and enjoyed this hands-on experience. Our Take-A-Stan-Linda-Hand Bullying Prevention Program has focused on perseverance with all students. PMS would like to thank the parents, school board, and community for the support you have shown us throughout the school year. At the high school, the past month has been a busy one for the Pecosin High School community. Students are hard at work writing research papers, conducting experiments, completing advanced placement examinations, career and technical education credentialing exams, and preparing for end-of-course assessments. Over the past month, students in our Intro to Health and Medical Sciences courses participated in a day of hands-on medical labs, thanks to ECPI. Our counseling department hosted the first annual Beyond Bull Island event, which provided answers to students' questions on a variety of post-secondary topics. Students in our health classes produced anti-tobacco public service announcements, and our newest inductees were welcomed into the National Honor Society. Additionally, both the girls and boys and girls tennis teams brought home the Conference XXV team championship trophies and will move on to regional competition, as our other spring sports near the end of their seasons and set their sights on conference competitions. The arts are also thriving at PHS, as we celebrated a stellar spring musical of Snow White and the Prince, as well as a dynamite spring band concert. We look forward to our spring chorus concert, which will be held tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Pecosin Middle School. As our students continue to make their mark in the classroom, on their sports teams, and in their clubs and activities, we would like to wish everyone much success as they conclude the school year and thank our families, the school board, and the local community for their continued support.
Board, thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
I just have a few things I'd like to mention tonight, and I left my notes in the car, so please bear with me. So, this is off the top of my... First off, I'd like to thank the students, the parents, the teachers, the office staff, and the principals for what I think is another great year. I was able to attend some of the honor roll presentations at the elementary school, and it was wonderful to see each quarter additional students getting on the honor roll, some that hadn't been, maybe the first and second, but then they were on the third, and it's wonderful to watch them achieve and know that they work hard, their parents are supporting them. So, great job to everybody, and we look forward to next year. I would also like to thank Ann Rollins, if she's watching. I'm doubtful of that, but if she is watching, I'd like to thank her for all of her support, making me laugh sometimes at inappropriate times, opening my eyes to see things from a different perspective, which she was very at, providing a buffer between me and Wayne here, which sometimes was very necessary. But I miss you, Ann. Thank you very much for your service. And finally, to Brody, I really appreciate all that you have done on the school board. Also, we didn't sit next to each other, I think, the whole school year, but school board members seem to be moving me closer and closer to the door, so I got to finally sit next to you. I've enjoyed our chats, and I think it's very funny that at the beginning of the school year, your reports have always been wonderful, but they've increased in length until now. I think you are actually the bulk of our school board meetings, so kudos to you for getting through all of that, and I know whatever you choose to do in the future, you're going to be a huge success. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, everything she said, I just want to ditto that. Also, I'd like to just thank the PE, the Education Foundation. My wife and I have been a part of that foundation from before I was on this board. We're big supporters. I did a quick math a moment ago, and that half million dollars over nine school years is about $55,000, over $55,000 a year. And that was about the time when the bottom kind of fell out of our state funding in 2008, I believe. So, what a tremendous effort, what a tremendous timing it was, and just keep it up. We're very happy, very proud to be a part of what you're doing. I'd like to call Ann Rollins a chicken for not being here, and that's it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ms. Mostella?
I'm afraid I do have a lot of comments tonight. I'm actually afraid I might actually go over Brody's time. Like Wayne said, I'd also like to thank the Pecosin Education Foundation, and I encourage, if anybody is watching, to support them by going to the casino nights or buying the bricks. I bought one for my daughters. I enjoy seeing it, and as you can see, it does come back to our schools, so thank them for everything that they have done. I'd also like to thank all of the individuals that performed tonight, and congratulate them on being recognized, and just say that the student presentation is actually my favorite part of the school meeting, so, you know, I'm glad they come, and I'm glad that we do get the opportunity to talk with them before they actually leave. Brody, thank you for your service for the past year. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you, and like Ann said, anything that you do, you're going to be successful. I just want to wish you the best of luck, and I know you're apparently proud. I'd also like to thank Ann. She served with poise. I'd like to thank her for her mentorship and her quick wit, and I hope that at some point that we can catch up in the future. And last, I want to congratulate the students that participated in the Great Computer Challenge this weekend. My daughter's team placed second in the desktop presentation. I was watching it live on the WHRO Facebook page, so I saw that the elementary school brought home several awards, so I just want to congratulate those students on their hard work. No further comment.
Ms. Hessel?
I can't top that at all. Everything she's said is perfect. Brody, it's been wonderful, and I'm sure you'll do phenomenal.
Yes, I want to thank Brody as well, and wish you very... So, I want to say that you set a hard bar to meet for the next person we're going to be speaking with, a number of people, to take your place in the tough one. And I also want to say to Ann that I also appreciate very much her mentorship and her kindness to me, and I'm sure she was wonderful on the board, but I just got to meet her and know her for a very brief period of time, and I just thought she was wonderful, so I will miss her personally. Thank you.
Thank you all, and I'd like to thank Ann, and I'd like to thank Brody, and it's been well said tonight, and so we appreciate both of you. And moving on, do we have any material for board review?
We do not this evening.
Thank you. We will have a work session this evening on the agenda, student handbook and code of conduct, and the summer school board meeting schedule. And with that, we will stand adjourned.